Good morning, everyone. Good morning and welcome to the Lake County Planning Commission hearing dated for... I'm not sure, am I projecting my voice enough?
Oh, hi. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Lake County Planning Commission hearing dated for March 28, 2024. I will call this meeting to order. It is 9:01. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Staff has...can we verify legal notice?
Yes, everything has been properly noticed.
Okay. We will go over our consent agenda. Looking to approve the minutes for March 14, 2024.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the March 14, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry...or all opposed, motion carries. And next, we will do public input. This is a chance for anybody of...any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on the agenda today. Anything that would like to be brought to the Planning Commission's attention, now would be your time. Are there any hands in the Zoom room? Okay. We will close public input. And our first time item is for 9:05. I'm showing a time now of 9:03. We will bring up the timed item shortly. Okay, thank you for your patience. Time now is 9:05. We will begin with a public hearing for consideration of major use permit UP 22-23 and mitigated negative declaration IS 22-42 for commercial cannabis cultivation, including 40,500 square feet of outdoor light deprivation cannabis...of light, excuse me, 40,500 square feet outdoor light deprivation cannabis canopy inside 15 greenhouses and type 13 cannabis distributor, transport-only self-distribution license for cannabis transportation. Applicant is Cana Factory, Avidis, I'm going to slay the last name, Mangacan and Mav's Group, located at 17900 Cantwell Ranch Road, Lower Lake, APN 049-290-01. Good morning, staff. Hi, Mary.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Today for your consideration is major use permit application UP 22-23 and initial study 22-42 for Cana Factory. The agenda today will include the permit request, project scope, site description, project analysis, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The applicant and consultant are present in chambers. The major use permit for commercial cannabis cultivation, for cultivation of 40,500 square feet, outdoor cannabis canopy area with 1A type 3 outdoor cultivation and 1A type 13 self-distribution licenses. The parcel size is approximately 56.36 acres. The site is located in Lower Lake, and it is approximately 1.6 miles northwest of the Lower Lake community growth boundary. The zoning designation for this site is general plan is agricultural and rural lands. The base zoning is split agricultural rural lands. And the project is located on the rural lands portion of the parcel. It is within the Lower Lake planning area and Superviseral District 1. The site description. The site is accessed from a gravel interior driveway from Cantwell Ranch Road. This is a private driveway that averages 15 feet in width to the cultivation site from Cantwell Ranch Road. The project's scope includes 40,500 square feet of outdoor canopy area within an 85,000 square foot cultivation area, 15 3,000 square foot greenhouses for light deprivation cannabis cultivation with no supplemental lighting. And that is really key for this project, is that there is no artificial lighting proposed. So I just want to clarify that. There's also 10 5,000 gallon water tanks with water dedicated to fire suppression. There is a six-foot perimeter security fence proposed, as well as a drip irrigation system, and 1,000 square foot fertilizer, chemical, and pesticide shed. It also includes a 700 square foot composting area, portable restrooms that will be ADA compliant, and handwashing stations, as well as 10 parking spaces, including 1 ADA compliant space. The existing uses at 17900 Cantwell Ranch Road include a residence residential accessory structures, a residential well, two permitted septic systems, an existing 5,032 square foot barn, an agricultural well, interior gravelled roadways with a turnaround, and a security gate. Regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Lower Lake Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. Within the Lake County General Plan, the goals and policies reviewed include land use, economic development, and water resources. Should be important to note that there are no conflicting policies within the general plan, but there are also no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation within the general plan. Okay, so in my project analysis for the Lower Lake Area Plan, I specifically chose these two...these points, 5.3, which focuses on economic development, and also 5.5, which focuses on a high level of community participation and input. With that being said, this project as proposed includes the employment of up to five individuals. These employees will spend money on local commodities and rent, which will benefit the greater Lower Lakes areas economy. The major use application for commercial cannabis cultivation is discretionary and is determined by the Planning Commission at public hearing. All public hearings are noticed to the neighbors and the local newspaper and surrounding parcels for the local neighbors within a 725-foot area of the project site. This provides an opportunity for community participation and input within public hearings such as this one today. The project analysis with the Lake County Zoning Ordinance was focused more so on Article 7 rural lands rather than agriculture because the site is located in split zoning and the proposed project is within the RL portion of the site. Article 27 was also reviewed for uses generally permitted, which does include cannabis cultivation with a minor or major use permit. The project analysis for SEQA initial study mitigated negative declaration found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. Public comment period occurred from June 22, 2023 to July 21, 2023, and all mitigations are outlined within the staff report, attachments to draft conditions of approval, and attachment for draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. AB 52 tribal notification. Notification of this project was sent to Big Valley Ranch Arena, Cortina Rancheria, the Elem Colony, Coy Nation, Michoel Wapo, Middletown Rancheria, Redwood Valley Rancheria, Robinson Rancheria, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Habemetal Pomo of Upper Lake Tribe, and Yochadhih Winton Nation on February 23, 2023. Tribal consultation was not requested.
Mary, could I ask a quick question there? The one tribal comment that we have in our staff report or in the package is from Habba Matulal referring you guys to the Middletown Rancheria, but there was nothing further from Middletown. Is that because they didn't respond?
That is correct.
Thanks.
And to date, we have not received a comment from Middletown Rancheria for this project.
Thanks.
So, a point of interest for this project that I found rather fascinating was due to regulation changes with the Department of Cannabis Control. Outdoor cultivation may incorporate light deprivation techniques as long as no artificial light is utilized. The Department of Cannabis Control recognizes full sun canopy within hoops and similar structures utilizing light deprivation with no artificial light as outdoor canopy. On May 17, 2023, the Board of Supervisors passed ordinance 3132, which is attached to the staff report in attachment 11, to align the use of outdoor cultivation utilizing light deprivation techniques within structures. And the Department of Cannabis Control regulations had kind of opened that pathway for the Board of Supervisors to have a better grasp of what the techniques and the alignment of the license types would be for cultivators' farming styles. Because of this, I had reached out to the Department of Cannabis Control requesting a clarifying comment specifically for this project as proposed utilizing permanent structures for outdoor cultivation. I received a clarifying comment from the DCC, which states, "The use of structures for outdoor licenses is allowed, one, for practical reasons due to the need to have something to hold up the light deprivation tarps, and, two, because the regulations, while noting that mixed light cultivation takes place in a structure, do not prohibit structures for outdoor licenses. Because the regulations don't address the use of structures in outdoor cultivation, we don't distinguish at this time between permanent or non-permanent structures when determining the license type. As long as they're not utilizing artificial light in the canopy area, they would be considered outdoors." An additional point of interest that I wanted to bring to the attention of the Commission was that onsite there is one Class 2 seasonal creek and seven ephemeral watercourses. The setbacks of the cultivation operation exceed the requirements of Article 27, uses generally permitted for cannabis cultivation. There is a lake stream bed alteration agreement that had been applied for by the applicants to CDFW, and CDFW did issue an operation of law to proceed as proposed with this project. An additional point of interest for this project is Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291. These are road standards that shall be applied to this outdoor cultivation operation due to the permanent structures in which cultivation activities will occur. Internal gates and roadways are designed to meet the CAL FIRE requirements, including adequate road standards with width for fire equipment access and a turnaround for emergency vehicles. And as you can see within the photos, the entrance to the property on the gravel access road does contain two gates. Following that, it is an interior gravelled roadway that comes to the second picture from the opposite end, and this is the existing turnaround that is there onsite. Another point of interest that I found unique to this project is that Spruce Grove Road is actually designated as an evacuation route. And because Cantwell Ranch Road is located off Spruce Grove Road, I thought it would be important to mention this. The Lake County Fire Safe Council has implemented a fire emergency plan for Lake County that includes Spruce Grove Road, the access road to Cantwell Ranch Road, as a designated secondary evacuation route. The project would employ up to five people during peak seasonal events, which is unlikely to affect the safe evacuation of Spruce Grove Road during an emergency. Cumulative impacts for this project. Within one mile of the proposed project, there are two approved projects and no pending projects. Within three miles of the project, there are 11 approved projects and four pending projects. A lot of these projects within the three-mile radius are the Morgan Valley area and the Lower Lake area, specifically Spruce Grove and Old Spruce Grove extension. Environmental recommendations. Adopt mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS 22-42 for use permit UP 22-23 with findings found in the staff report. Major use permit recommendations. Approve use permit UP 22-23 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. And I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mary. Yes?
One clarification to make to the conditions of approval. Michelle Iris, Principal Planner. In the conditions of approval, there's just a typographical error on the date for the valid until for the use permit is noted as March 28, 20234, but it's intended to say 2034, 2034. And then additionally, under general condition A1C, it reads, "Supporting documentation provided by the applicant." We'd like to add a little more specificity to that, saying, "Application materials provided by the applicant and attachments to the staff report dated March 28, 2024," just so that that's more clear.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and we'll make note of that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Appears there was only one public comment contained in our package, and yet I'm not sure it even applies to this project. The subject line says UP 22-23, but the commenters refer to UP 20-83. So should we just disregard that completely?
I did have an opportunity to review that comment, and there are a lot of points that are mentioned that do not apply to this project.
Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner Hess. Any other Commissioners have questions for staff or the applicant before we open it up for public comment?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Regarding the greenhouses, obviously those designs have to be approved by a building. Okay, just want to double check because there was a sheet that we got here with some concerns about... Yes, I just wanted to make sure that all this was addressed and that it's good to go.
The permanent structure greenhouses will require a building permit. This will not be an agriculturally exempt building permit. This will be a standard building permit for permanent structures.
Right, yeah. Just because of the temporary ones are, I mean, a little bit different because you have to actually take those down after a certain period. So I just wanted to make sure that since this is going to be permanent and on the site plans, it shows some kind of foundational work, either concrete post, so I just wanted to make sure that all that was addressed.
Yes, these permanent structures will require building permits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Field?
Thank you. At the beginning, I think you said this project was northwest of Lower Lake, so I was confused, but I think you meant southwest.
Oh, sorry. The community growth boundary is northwest of the project site.
Okay. I had one question on the property management plan. Why was the Security Section 5.0 redacted?
Thank you. Good question. We've started going through the property management plans and other application materials more carefully in redacting anything that may be confidential or sensitive in nature, and the security plan is one of those items, particularly the site plans and the schematics showing where all of the security measures would be placed.
Got it. Thank you.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, it does. How many plants are we talking about? The water estimate is for roughly 500 plants in the hydrology report. Do we know this?
So I can defer that question to... So I can defer that question to the applicant's consultant.
And do we have the consultant in chambers? Good morning.
Hi, Mike Mittel. I didn't write the hydrology report. I can get her on the phone, but she usually does that. It's a basic breakdown of 500 huge plants. First, there's another comparison, I believe, in there for smaller plants, or she usually includes it. That one might have been done a little later, but it's pretty much the same. The 500 really big plants takes a lot more water than the littler plants in the greenhouses.
Okay.
I could have Angie get on if you need her.
Well, it's more of a question for you, really, because, I mean, a hydrologist person is just doing what they're given, so...
Yeah, she pulls those numbers off the state's calculations, but per square foot, it's basically the same per acre, the big plants. They just, they take a lot less water per plant.
Yeah.
The amount of dirt is about the same that you're watering.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. If we don't have any questions for staff or for the applicant directly, we will open it up for a public comment.
I have one more question or concern.
Sure.
So, because, I mean, obviously, this is going to be going through a, they will require a building permit, but if these holes are going to be dug in the ground for cement, to cement down the posts, would, I know that it was referred to Middletown Rancheria, would it be possible to still reach out to them and potentially have someone monitor that if there's going to be any excavation?
So, that question I would defer directly to the applicant.
Okay. So, when the applicant comes up, if they could address that question, whenever you want to switch.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we also did include mitigation measures related to unanticipated discovery, which I know is a little bit different than what you're mentioning, but we do have those mitigation measures in place as well.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Vasgen Manjikian. I am...
Can you get closer to the mic, please? Sorry.
Good morning, everyone.
There you go.
My name is Vasgen Manjikian. I am one of the owners of Mav Group, and my father, Avetis Manjikian, is the applicant. So I'm going to speak for him. We are open to any kind of, you know, if anyone needs to be there to kind of guide the way, or, you know, if what we can do, we can't do. So we are open to that for, as far as the question with the tribe that you were asking, concrete and stuff. So we're open to whatever measures that need to be taken.
And typically, what happens is they go and check out the site and look for potential signs of archaeological, you know, findings, and sometimes they might not find anything, but once you start digging, you know, augering, that's kind of what concerns the tribes.
We are open to all of that. Whatever needs to be, whatever measures need to be taken, we're open to that.
Currently, in the draft conditions of approval, we do have a requirement of prior to ground disturbing activities that the perma-te shall submit a cultural resources plan. So what to do if things are found, as well as in tribal cultural resources, it now does require all onsite personnel shall receive tribal cultural resource sensitivity training. So what you're discussing is actually a condition that's not currently within our project.
Thank you, Director Turner. So I do have public comment open. This is an opportunity for anyone speaking in opposition or in support of the project, or any questions for the applicant. No one in chambers? Ruby, do we have any hands in the Zoom room?
Zoom participant Maria Khan, please state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Maria Khan.
Good morning, Maria, we can hear you.
Good morning, thank you. Thank you all for your hard work. I know that cannabis is a big thing for our county. I do have some experience being next to a cannabis grow, and so I have two comments that I want to make. The first is I would hope that the county would take before pictures and after pictures. It's an absolutely stunning piece of property, and I know from experience that the one that was next to me absolutely destroyed that property and the buildings on it once they vacated. So I would encourage staff to take before and after pictures of any and all projects for cannabis. Second is, none of the projects ever reference the use of guard dogs in the cannabis proposals, and our experience is that we had several dogs left on the property to fend for themselves, and that's a big concern. A lot of these dogs that we're seeing in the shelters are unaltered, unvaccinated, undocumented, and uncared for, and so they end up being dumped on the streets or left on the properties, and I have a real concern about the safety and well-being of those animals. So I would encourage that the county incorporate some plans around the animals on the county, have animal control go out on a site visit, and account for all the animals that are there, and make sure that they are vaccinated, altered, and taken control of by a person and not a corporation or an entity. So I think that basically are two of my big concerns, that these organizations can just obliterate properties and they leave animals behind that are left to fend for themselves, and that's just not okay. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment and sharing your experience with us, Maria. Are there any other hands in the Zoom room? Okay. And no one else wants to speak in chambers? You're welcome to approach the podium. Commissioner Hess, do you have something to say? Okay.
I think the dog, the animal...
Your name one more time, just so that we have it on record.
Vasgen Manjikian. I think the animals that she's referring on, so we have two, so we have a caregiver that lives on the property that takes care of the property, and we have a small, not a German Shepherd, it's a rescue dog, and he takes care of him, Lucky, and also a small Shih Tzu, which is his dog, and so he takes care of them very well. We feed them very well. They have a, they live in the barn, so they are taken care of very well. I think that's the dog she's referring on. Sometimes they do kind of walk towards the property and around the property, but they're never out there or, you know, or escape or anything like that. They're very well taken care of.
Thank you.
If I can just comment to Maria, thank you very much. I know that this dog issue is, I've run into it countywide, too, and I talked to animal control about it, they're very concerned. Once again, I think this is a legislative issue that when we look at the ordinance, something that needs to be brought up.
Go ahead, Director Turner.
We do have regulations regarding pets elsewhere in the Lake County code. It is the purpose of Animal Care and Control's department is to oversee that and bring problem or issues to the Board of Supervisors in case of nuisance animals or vicious animals. They do respond on complaint basis.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that we're differentiating between pets and animals that are being used for a specific purpose. That's all. I don't think it's considered a pet if it's a...
It regulates it by species rather than its purpose.
I just have one comment. I just want to thank...
Your name one more time, sorry.
Mike Mittel. I just want to thank Mary, she's been great on this project. Anything that's came up, she's been right there to help us get through it, like a lot of other projects. She's a great asset to the county. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you for your comment. It's always nice. Okay, one more look around. No, are there any hands in the...
I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about us.
Your name one more time.
Vasgen Manjikian. So my father and I, we have been living in Ukiah for the past eight years. We also have a farm over there. We were one of the first applicants in Ukiah and Mendocino County. Until this day, we maintain that property, we run the cultivation. We've always been really on top of everything there, and we have big plans here as far as, you know, we'd like to be just a great asset to the community. Our cannabis views are very different from a lot of people. We want to be here, you know, for a long time, even after we are gone, and so we want to maintain a very good business. Our cultivation methods are very good for the environment, always organic, everything that we do. We also have manufacturing that, and brands that are in the cannabis industry. So we like to kind of put all that together and just, you know, have a great business that's going to be a great asset to the county here. And so that's our goal. I just wanted to make a comment and introduce a little bit about us.
Thank you. We look forward to, you know, we do like to see fully integrated farms and stuff here as well. Good morning.
Good morning, Planning Commission, Michael Wagner. I just thought I would chime in. You know, with all the farms that we've seen leave the industry in the past couple of years, I like to see and have the idea that we are going to start to refill those positions. Like in the industries, there's ups and downs, and it doesn't go away. The people get changed, and hopefully as they get changed out, they're for better operators, taking into consideration what Maria just said about people utilizing guard dogs. That's a very old practice. That's something that would typically be related to like a black market deal. You know, here we're talking about a legal place where they have, you know, actual pets, these aren't being used as guard dogs, and replacing the money stream is important in my mind without degrading our expectation for the quality of how people run their operation. So, my comment, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in chambers? Okay. Ms. Ruby, do we have a hand in the Zoom room? Maria, we're going to unmute you and give you a moment to speak. Just be sure to state your first and last name for the record, please.
Thank you. Again, it's Maria Khan, and I was referring to large breed dogs that are being used as protection, and whether or not they consider them pets or not, these animals are being left and dumped in the streets, and we're seeing a huge influx of the Great Pyrenees, the German Shepherds, all the large breed dogs that are typically used for guarding and protecting are now, ever since 2021, I think we've seen a huge influx of this. So I did want to make that distinction, and also that one comment about the Shih Tzu being in a barn, I don't really think that's an appropriate place for a small dog to live, but that's just my personal opinion. So I just wanted to clarify that they are being used as guard dogs. Whether or not they're an up-and-up organization or not, we do see that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
The experience we have had in our department is during our annual compliance monitoring visits. If we do note that there do seem to be animals in distress of any kind, we bring animal care and control onto the, yeah, we notify them to let them know.
Thank you for that, Director Turner. Counsel? Never mind. Okay, I'm going to officially close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or action. Have all your questions been answered, Commissioner Chavez? Yes, okay.
I have a very brief comment that I like Ms. Khan's idea of a before, first site visit photo, and then an after photo. I think that's, that makes perfect sense, and I don't think it adds a ton of additional work on somebody like...
Yeah, or even just keeping it in the file, you know, on site visits, or...
You have a record of it.
Absolutely.
So, I'd actually like to speak on this, if I may.
Sure.
Prior to the sites receiving their use permits before the approval, the planning staff does go out to the site to be able to take pictures for our staff report, for initial studies, things like that. With that being said, we do also our compliance monitoring every year, so we have a track record over the course of the life of the permit in which they're operating, where we do take site photos, and we have archives of these photos from every year's compliance monitoring, as well as their monitoring inspection reports. So those are available. The one thing we don't have as of yet is photos of the sites after the use permit has expired, because we have not reached that 10-year expiration as of yet.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Field?
I know it's of great public concern. I've heard a lot of complaints about abandoned greenhouses, so I'd love to see some ideas, discussion about how to handle this. I mean, 10 years is a long time.
You are right, 10 years is a long time. There is site reclamation, efforts that can be done for remediation as well, and that's where we would loop in our code enforcement team to address those issues.
We have also recently applied for a grant. I'm not sure if it's been awarded yet, but it is for remediation of cannabis sites for when people walk away from them, so...
Excellent, wonderful. And is that a state grant? I'm just curious, or is that from the cannabis tax?
Shannon knows the details a lot better than I do.
Okay.
Sorry?
The grant is a CDFW grant.
Excellent.
And it's based on site reclamation, both for permitted sites that have been abandoned and illegal cultivation sites focusing on environmental impacts and restoration.
Public comment is closed, but I will let you speak if you just say your first and last name.
Michael Wagner, there's a bond issued for the site when they get their license. Perhaps that'd be useful.
Thank you for that input.
That is for the state license. We have a condition already saying that the site shall be restored to its original state within six months of the expiration of the use permit, termination of use, or abandonment of the site. So if we end up do needing, that we do need these funds in order to fix it because the owner has not, or the perma-te has not done it themselves, we will be able to apply those funds, but we'll also be looking to hold the perma-te responsible and the property owner.
Okay, thank you. So we have public comment closed. We are at the moment looking for either further discussion or motion for this agenda item.
I'm prepared to offer a motion.
Okay.
If colleagues are in place.
Okay.
I move that the Planning Commission find that potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 22-42 submitted by Cana Factory, Avetis Manjikian, and Mav's Group for the property located at 17900 Cantwell Ranch Road, Lower Lake, APN 049-290-01 will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that the Planning Commission adopt initial study IS 22-42 with the findings listed in the staff report dated March 28, 2024.
And as amended here today with those changes, correct?
The findings have not been amended. The amendments to the conditions of approval will take place in the next one, and so, since you just paused for a moment, I wanted to be very clear that we understand what the amendments are at this point. One, we were just doing a typographical correction on the expiration date. Secondly, adding the date of today's hearing to the supplemental documentation provided by the applicant. We do not at this time have a requirement that a tribal monitor be onsite during ground disturbance. I'm not clear if that was the consensus.
Wouldn't that be something the applicant would have to work out directly with the tribe?
We do not compel the applicant to work out, work that out with a particular tribe, but we do, so far, my response to that suggestion was just to further flesh out what Michelle had already listed as what exists in our conditions right now, which is a cultural sensitivity training submission of a cultural resource management plan prior to any ground disturbance, as well as the ones that you're used to seeing a little more often about should any fines occur.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Further point of clarification, nobody made the first motion that Commissioner, I sort of butted in right before you guys were able to do that, so if Commissioner Hess was going to do that motion, sorry, I missed it.
Well, I read the motion.
He did the...
The second one?
No.
The first, so we're getting there.
Okay, keep going.
I'll do the second one now. I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 22-23, applied for by Avetis Manjikian and Mav's Group for the property located at 17900 Cantwell Ranch Road, Lower Lake, APN 049-290-01, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated March 28, 2024, and as amended here today.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM. or before the seventh day following the Planning Commission's decision on this matter. Thank you for that. Next item. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Next item is for 9/20, a public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 20-23 and mitigated negative declaration IS 20-26 for five A-type 3 medium outdoor licenses, one A-type 4 nursery license, and one A-type 13 self-distribution license for up to 193,800 square feet, 4.45 acres of cannabis canopy. Applicant Van Ranch or Omar Malflavin located at 15095, 15365, 15187, 15525, and 17247 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, APNs 002-021-04, 15, 16, 17, and 23. Thank you very much. Looks like we have Mary as well presenting.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. Today we are, for your consideration is UP 20-23, IS 20-26 for Van Ranch, Omar Malflavin. The agenda today will include the permit request, project scope, site description, project analysis, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The applicant and consultant are both present in chambers today. The permit request is for commercial cannabis cultivation for a total of five A-type 3 medium outdoor licenses, one A-type 4 nursery license, and one A-type 13 self-distribution license for 4.45 acres of commercial cannabis canopy that is proposed within seven different cultivation areas. The combined parcel size is approximately 351.78 acres. The site is located in Upper Lake. The nearest community growth boundary is over six and a half miles from the project site. As you can see on the vicinity map, the yellow stars indicate the areas in which cultivations will take place. And the blue star is a parcel that is used for clustering purposes and no cultivation will take place on that parcel. The zoning designations for the site include general plan, rural lands, and resource conservation. The base zoning is agricultural preserve, scenic combining, waterway, and floodway fringe. The site is within the Upper Lake Neese planning area within Supervisory District 3. Site description. The project site is accessed from Middle Creek Road, which connects to Elk Mountain Road in the southeast corner of the project property. The interior roadways are comprised of gravel and native soil. Locking metal gates control access to the project site. There are several ephemeral class 3 watercourses that are located on the project parcel. Historical land uses include agricultural uses such as animal grazing, orchards, and legacy cannabis operations. Most of the project property was burned in the Mendocino Complex fire of 2018 and the project was issued early activation in 2020. The project scope is up to 4.45 acres of outdoor cannabis canopy within seven cultivation areas, 28 5,000 gallon water storage tanks, including steel fiberglass water tanks dedicated to fire suppression, eight 120 square foot wooden storage sheds, two 2,100 square feet immature plant propagation greenhouses, a 9,750 square foot processing facility building with ADA compliant restroom and a roof-mounted solar array, a loading zone for that processing facility, and 15 employee parking spaces, including one ADA compliant space. Existing uses and improvements on the project parcel include a residence, septic system, a 4,760 square foot barn, and three permitted groundwater wells. Regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Upper Lake Neese Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. The Lake County General Plan was reviewed. There are no conflicting policies within the general plan, but there are no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis within the general plan. The general plan goals and policies reviewed include Chapter 3 land use, Chapter 7 health and safety, Chapter 8 noise, and Chapter 11 water resources. The Upper Lake Neese Area Plan analysis was for specifically erosion control measures and resource conservation and protected areas from riparian and wetland habitat. The applicant has submitted an erosion and sediment control plan prepared by Realm Engineering for the proposed cultivation areas and a commercial building site grading and drainage improvement plan prepared by Tall Tree Engineering for the proposed processing facility. The draft initial study mitigated negative declaration incorporates mitigation measures BYO 4 specifically addressing riparian setbacks for pesticides and fertilizer storages and BYO 5 addressing 100-foot setbacks from the top of bank of any watercourse, wetland, or vernal pool. For the project analysis, I reviewed the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, specifically Article 4 agricultural preserve zone, Article 34 scenic combining district, Article 37 waterway combining district, Article 36 floodway fringe, and Article 27 uses generally permitted. The project analysis for the SEQA initial study mitigated negative declaration found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. The public comment period occurred from January 31, 2023 to March 2, 2023. The mitigations are outlined in Staff Report Attachments 2 Draft Conditions of Approval and Attachment 4 Draft Initial Study. AB 52 tribal notification was sent to 11 local tribes on March 16, 2020. Tribal consultation was requested by the Hebemetal Pomo of Upper Lake Tribe. Tribal consultation concluded on February 10, 2023. As a result, tribal cultural resources mitigations have been implemented into the draft ISMND staff report and conditions of approval. Aspects of interest for this project include water use. There are three existing on-site permitted groundwater wells equipped with water meters. Estimated annual water usage of the proposed cultivation operation is 7.6 acre-feet per year. The hydrological analysis projected the average annual recharge during a drought year to be about twice the amount that would be needed for this project. The proposed cultivation operation is anticipated to have enough water to meet the demand of the project without causing overdraft conditions. An additional aspect of interest for this project is watercourses on-site. Multiple ephemeral and intermittent watercourses flow through the project property into West Fork Middle Creek. No development is proposed within 100 feet of the identified watercourses consistent with Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. Six mitigation measures have been identified to reduce biological resources environmental impacts to less than significant. These are identified within the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration, the staff report, and conditions of approval for this project. Another aspect of interest for this project is tree removal and ground disturbance. Portions of the project property, including some of the proposed cultivation areas, were logged in 2020 under the CAL FIRE, or sorry, California Department of Forestry and Fire Prevention, CAL FIRE, Notice of Emergency Timber Operations following the Mendocino Complex fire. This did burn nearly the entire project parcel, as I had originally stated at the beginning of the presentation. Additionally, a less than three-acre conversion exemption has been obtained for the proposed project for the forest land that would be converted to a non-forest use. According to the applicant's submitted materials, over 100 acres of forest land on the project property will not be converted to a non-forest use and would not be affected by the three acres of use from cultivation operations.
Could you explain that exemption a little bit more?
Sure. So the exemption allows tree removal specific to CAL FIRE regulations and it would have to reach certain criteria in order for that exemption to be issued.
So are all three acres burnt out? I mean, are we talking about just dying dead and fallen trees? Or are we talking about three acres of removal of live oak, for example?
Sure. So based on the photos within the presentation, this is the area of burn scar from the Mendocino Complex fire in 2018. A lot of these trees are dead and dying. They are downed trees as well. A lot of this area is in dire need of restoration and cleanup efforts because of the dead and dying trees that are falling and presenting as a hazard.
No, that's helpful here because I was concerned we were talking about losing three acres of meaningful forest land.
Right, and this is within the burn scar.
Thanks.
Let me just put it this way. Will there be any removal of live trees?
So that was not proposed within the project as it reads, but I can defer that question to the applicant's consultant. Erosion control was a big interest to me for this project due to the amount of trees that were being removed and the grading that would occur for the processing facility. With that, Realm Engineering did prepare an erosion and sediment control plan for the proposed cultivation area. Tall Tree Engineering has prepared a commercial building site grading and drainage improvement plan for the impervious surfaces from the processing facility. And the site is enrolled in the State Water Resources Control Board's Cannabis General Order, Best Practicable Treatment or Control, BPTC, measures. And these have been implemented throughout the project. They are listed on Page 6 of the staff report for your review. Cumulative impacts for this project. Within one mile of the proposed project is one approved project and no pending projects. And within three miles of the proposed project are four approved projects and no pending projects. Recommendations for this project. The environmental recommendation is to adopt mitigated negative declaration initial study, IS 20-26 for use permit UP 20-23 with findings found in the staff report. The major use permit recommendations are to approve use permit UP 20-23 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report.
One modification to the conditions of approval, similar to the last project, but for condition of approval A1C. Just again, like to clarify, it says support documentation provided by the applicant. And we would like to revise that to say application materials and attachments to the staff report dated March 28, 2024, to be more specific.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for staff or the applicant before we open it up for public comment?
Yeah, I have one little question. I think you said that there was 100-foot setback from an ephemeral stream. Is that from the floodplain or from the stream itself?
That is from the stream itself.
Okay, I think that might be, I mean, that's problematic. We have the water resources in the agency comments concerned about that. I know it's a big floodplain. Are we talking about actually having, I mean, this could flood very easily. Am I wrong here? Am I missing something?
So all setbacks were from the top of the bank, not necessarily a buffer around the bank?
Right, but the floodplain is much larger. I'm not, I don't have a map in front of me where the floodplain is, but I kind of know the area and it seems like the floodplain is pretty big. So I'm concerned about that.
Sure. In the initial study, it notes that the proposed cultivation areas and proposed facilities would be in flood zone X specifically. But that's something that we can also let the applicant clarify during public comment.
So X is what, 100-year?
Yeah, areas of minimal flooding, sorry.
100-year floodplain?
Probably, yeah.
I appreciate my colleague's questions because there are pretty severe slopes on this property. And X, I assume, means X, not so much of a big deal.
X is undetermined. So the 100-year floodplain, I think, is AE.
Okay. That is, that is a good concern though, Commissioner Field. Any other questions for the applicant or staff before we open it up for public comment? And maybe have the consultant or applicant shed some light on some of this for us?
There were just a number of concerns that the water resources Yulia Osatrova brought up. And I'm not seeing them addressed and I'm wondering if I'm just missing it. I mean, this, the date is April 13, 2020, so it was four years ago.
So a lot of, pardon, a lot of the issues that had been previously addressed with water resources are covered within the hydrological analysis.
That's probably a more recent document.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll take a look at it again.
Okay, we will open it up for public comment at this time. This will give anybody an opportunity to speak in opposition or in support of this project or ask any, not ask, questions. Go ahead and you're welcome to approach the podium if you have anything to say. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Trey Sherrill. I'm the consultant working with the Van Ranch project. Sorry, there were several, several questions I wanted to address. The, I also, about the, oh, it was about the setbacks. No development is proposed within the, within the floodplain. All new development would occur outside of the floodplain, the X zones.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
There is a, there is an existing building, a barn, that would be used for harvest storage, is proposed for use as harvest storage, that is within the floodplain, but that is not a new building. It would not, no new construction involved there. As for tree removal, all of the trees that would have needed to be removed for this project were removed in 2020 following the Mendocino Complex fire. The less than three-acre conversion permit is to allow for a different use so that those areas, it allows for the use of that land, not for a non-forest activity.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Sorry, there was one other thing and it has escaped my mind. Oh, I did, there's a, in addition to the gradient erosion control plans, probably the greatest thing when it comes to protection of erosion sediment, water resources, there's, the applicant had a. the applicant had a road improvement plan put together by Pacific Watershed Associates. You can find that at the end of the stormwater management section of the property management plan. Obviously, erosion sediment control associated with the cultivation development is absolutely necessary, but when it comes to true protection of water resources, I think that implementation of that road improvement plan is really what's going to have the most impact. And I'm available to answer any other questions if you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much.
I had a question about the proximity of this project to the campground. Do you know what I'm talking about, the campground there?
Yes, I've camped there before.
Yeah, how close are these, the actual growing areas to the campground?
Well, the closest one would be the nursery site. It's the northeast cultivation area. I would have to measure that to know exactly, but I can give you that in just a second. It's approximately 1,200 feet, 1,200 feet east of those areas.
That's problematic. Thank you. I know on the Lake County GIS website, that's what I use for measuring. It's really, they make it really easy, you just drop a pin, but I haven't done that, so I was curious. It looked like, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that it needs to be 1,500 feet away from any place where children gather?
There is a 1,000-foot buffer from sensitive receptors or any place where children may gather, such as schools, parks, and playgrounds.
And I believe this would actually be the public lands where there's trails and things like that, and it's a 1,000-foot buffer as well. Yeah, the majority, the majority would occur, of cultivation would occur further away, but the nursery, that location was selected because there's already a PG&E utility connection there, whereas the further extents of the property, it would be cost prohibitive to try to run power to those locations.
So, I'm trying to visualize it. The nursery is within what kind of a building?
Greenhouses.
Okay.
Two greenhouses, to be specific.
And do they have filtration systems or air filtration systems or not?
There is not a requirement. They could, it probably, would be unlikely for the desire to have an air filtration system, because, one, filtration systems are used for two reasons, to prevent contaminants from coming into the building and prevent odors from escaping. If you're talking about immature plants, they're not really producing odors, and if you're talking, and then as far as potential contaminants, it's a really remote area, not a lot of industrial agriculture, and so I don't think that contaminants coming into the building would be a...
Right, I'm just thinking about the kids at that campground. It's a really neat little spot, and that would be my concern.
Commissioner Fields, if I may?
Yeah.
I wanted to add that the type 4 nursery license in which the applicant is applying for is for immature plants only. There will be no mature plants within that greenhouse to produce the pungent odor.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I don't know that much about cannabis or what stage they produce the horrible ordure, but...
That being said, there is a small canopy area there. Let me, look, I don't remember the exact square footage of that camp. So, there's two, there's two greenhouses, and then behind the greenhouses, there would be a, I believe it's 10,000, it's 80 by 130, so 10,400-square-foot outdoor cultivation gardens that would have mature plants there. It's a slightly further distance than the greenhouses, which I briefly measured it at 1,200 feet. Once again, the remainder of the over four acres of cultivation would be, would occur, you know, over half a mile from that, but this one area is, you know, between 1,000 and 1,500 feet from that campground.
You mean the nursery area?
It's a combination. There is an outdoor cultivation area that would have canopy mature plants, and then between that outdoor cultivation area, there are two greenhouse, between that outdoor cultivation area and Elk Mountain Road, and where the campground is located, there are two greenhouses. You cannot, you would not be able to see the greenhouses or the outdoor cultivation area from Elk Mountain Road or the campground. They're just, they're kind of tucked behind a little hill there.
Yeah, my concern is the odor, but I wish I had a map where I could just see the, is there one in this? I don't remember seeing one in the property management plan.
So...
That shows where the actual...
I believe the initial study...
Okay, I found one, but it's, yeah, let me just look at it for a minute.
If I could take us back, then, to the floodzone area, I think that I misspoke. It's not that X is fully undetermined, it's that it is, I've been checking a few different pages on FEMA, and it's either sometimes between the 100 and the 500 or outside the 500, so it's not in the floodzone.
Not in our lifetimes.
Correct.
Well, is there any other hands in the Zoom room or anyone in chambers that would like to speak on this item while we still have public comment open? Take your time. And when you get to the microphone, please be sure to state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Joe Diaz, and I live just south of this proposal. And they're basically good neighbors. We've lived with them for 30 years, so, but I do have some concerns or more questions. One, there is no PG&E power actually to the site. Now, they can probably get it, but, and I had concerns on how much power they were using, you know, that we didn't overrun our system and get brownouts. It's probably a minor concern there. The other concern was where the lock gates are. According to the maps, I could see the lock gates are, if they're where they are right now, it would prevent access for me to go up the road to visit my neighbors or whatever. And could you...
Hey, you can just, let's just...
Come on, come on, Omar.
You can...
So, like I say, we're not really fighting all this. And then I had another concern with where they take, when they haul the product out, you know, because this can be kind of like a tractor nuisance. I don't want a bunch of people that want to steal, steal it on my roadway if he's going to take it out the other end.
All right, and does that conclude your comment?
I think that's pretty much.
Okay, we appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we'll give him an opportunity to alleviate and answer some of those questions.
Hello. I'm Omar. Thanks for helping me get through this process. It's definitely been life-changing and a long journey, but yeah, to address Joe's concern, he's always going to have the code, he's like a good friend, so we're not planning on blocking it off. We definitely want to keep it secure, and the Middle Creek was always going to have access, so like the more of the sites independently are where the lock gates are going to be. And I think that will hopefully address that question. The power pole that we're dropping is there. Yes, we haven't got to the budgeting and the just economy that we haven't been able to go all the way with it, but that's the logistically, that's the only thing that's feasible for us, and that's why that location, sort of immature plants, could give us a chance to get going.
Okay. And then the lock gates, and what was the, I didn't jot the last one down.
Oh, the traffic, he was concerned about, like the product coming in now.
Yes.
So, I mean, we are going to operate during regular business hours, and it's just, we are, with the licensed self-distribution and being a local and in that community, I'm not really concerned about, especially because it's a valley and the people that live, it's like it's unincorporated township, so we kind of live like our own little village already, and we all look after each other. So, I mean, people coming out of the bear or wherever come to steal from us, I think we're the least likely target, and somebody's more close to the street personally, so that's kind of how, why I would feel safe, and I'd like to, you know, definitely work my neighbor and make him feel more safe in whatever way I could do that, you know?
Well, sure, sure. And I think even just the idea of, you know, how it will actually go down and maybe illustrating it for him.
Security system camera.
Yeah, you know, it's a pickup, it's shipping and receiving, basically, you know?
It's in our whole packet, so...
And all your metrics and all of that, so even just that might kind of give him a peace of mind that...
I could go over the project management plan with him and...
Okay.
...those concerns.
Well, I think that kind of touches on all the bases, does...
I had a question before the applicant goes away. When is the future processing building expected to be built?
It's going to be a while. Just like financially, it's just, like, it's a miracle I'm still here. I didn't think I was going to be here like the last two years, so it's going to be, for the actual processing, I'm probably going to have to outsource it to a different processor just at this time, so I'm thinking at least a year and a half, two years.
Okay, I was just, yeah, just curious as to kind of how you were going to phase out your project? If you're going to start off with the five licenses right away, or were you going to start with a few, but that's your goal?
I want to, yeah, I want to start with all five for cultivation and then outsource it. So, I'm like, now, if I actually get this, the next, like literally, I'm going to get on the phone, be like, hey, look, if I grow this and I figure out how to get to this step, can I process it over there and work out a deal? So, that's kind of really up to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Field, do you have any questions? Did you...
No, I looked at the map, and there's a topo map in here in the property management plan that shows the, the closest grow area is on the other side of what looks like some topographical features, like a ridge, so I'm not too concerned about that, but on the, right in the middle of the project, the big site there, it's, I'm guessing 1,500 feet from the campground, so I just want to express some concern about it. That's all. It's not a deal killer. I mean, it can't be.
Trey Sherrill, consultant for the applicant. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on the processing. Omar doesn't tend to take advantage of the temporary processing options that were recently made available, using tensor, temporary tensor containers to do some primary processing, such as drying on the property, and then, you know, the full processing, such as trimming and things of that, trimming, grading, curing, those things could occur offsite in a licensed processing facility. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
It's okay with the commission. Could we request a five-minute break, please?
Yes, let's see, I'm showing a time now of 10:17. We will return here at 10:25. Good morning.
Good morning, Michael Wagner. Thank you, everybody, for once again bringing us, sorry, along here in the conversation. As usual, I think the board points out some important things and with that, staff has, you know, taken these things into account, I think, all the way around. With that, I think the amount of due diligence that's being done on these things really shows a leveling up of how the county processes these items. In regards to PG&E, I, I think giving them an alternative to, to be able to get started and move forward with, with, within the conditions of approval is a great way to move it along. Mrs. Fields' point about the children, I mean, that's always an important aspect, but when you do take a look at the topo maps and I've driven that area, I've camped in both those places and actually been well up Elk Mountain myself. And so unless the kids are aspiring mountaineers, I think the likelihood that they're not going to cross a big creek and climb a mountainside to get there, I think that's pretty well-founded. So all joking aside, I appreciate the time and detail that everybody's put into this project and again, supporting the county, meaning the people in this county by bringing in good actors into the industry that are going to be a benefit to the community, both monetarily and culturally is important. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room?
Zoom participant Maria Khan, please state your first and last name and you will have three minutes.
Hi, thank you again. My name's Maria Khan. A couple of things, one is a concern about the setbacks of the waterway area. There is the species, the western pond turtle that is in that area and the setback is 100 feet from the waterways. The western pond turtle requires anywhere from 100 to 500 meters for nesting and overwintering there. So I think that's kind of a concern. You need to look at also the, the golden eagle and the peregrines are in that area. There's quite a few species of animals that are noted there that, that, that this, this will disturb, that activity like this will disturb. Next is, I want to let Joe know that he should expect a lot more activity on his road with operations like this, that they, they aren't quiet and they do, they will present some problems just from experience. On a larger issue, I am noticing and I have information, personal information from friends that I have friends in the grow industry, that they actually buy property, prepare that property, get permits and then sell it off with the permit to organizations that then come in and use the land for growing. And I think that is a huge concern for everybody that, that this is a loophole that's going to just get anybody into our county. A lot of these property owners and new businesses coming in are from out of the area and they are connected with much larger organizations with a much bigger footprint than they're, they're letting us to believe. They're not these little ladies who are wanting to buy property and grow weed for their grandma for, who's got dementia. It's not like that. They're, they're, a lot of them are misleading the public when they come in to try to tell us that this is what they're doing and they're, they're going to be good stewards because my experience was they tried to blow smoke up us and the county looked the other way and we were left with a horrific situation as residents of a small valley, quiet valley, where this whole thing took over and disrupted all of our lives. So I just wanted that comment to be on record when we go along with these processes and I think it's terrible, a terrible idea for the county to allow people to buy properties, obtain permits and then sell those properties off into this industry. It's just going to destroy the natural beauty of our county. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other hands in the Zoom room? No? Okay. You can go ahead and speak.
Just to address Maria's point and, you know, I feel.
Make sure you state your first and last name.
I'm sorry. Michael Wagner. To address Maria's point and, and I think that she does have a, like a well-founded complaint and I honestly couldn't agree more with her. But in this particular scenario, the operator is, is not the property owner. And if anybody knows Hippie Joe, you know, he's not giving that property up in his lifetime.
Thank you for your comment.
Additionally, county code as it exists does require background checks prior to, or in order to transfer a permit from one permutee to the next, there are also requirements at the state level.
Thank you, Director.
And it is something that we do confirm on our annual compliance monitoring.
Thank you, Director Turner.
Frankly, that's something that happens in any type of business. Some people want to grow a business to a certain point and then sell it. And I understand the, the Zoom room comment, but I think those protections that are in place are very useful.
Thank you, Commissioner Hest.
Yeah, I would like to just thank Maria for her comment and Director to the biological analysis that was prepared. It's accessible online. If she needs help finding that, I'm sure staff would be willing to help her.
Thank you. And we'll bring it back to the podium.
Good morning, Trey Sherrill, consultant for the applicant. I want to thank staff for, for finding a way to, with through conditions, through the additional condition for basically covering, covering my mistake. I, I thought that the power drop was already there. It's, it's been applied for, but it is not there yet. I do just have one question. This is in regards to the, the restricted use of, of generators and it's just, you know, we'll, we'll work with the, the extra condition, but it's just a point of, a question, basically, knowing how we, how we can move forward. This is in the ordinance amending chapter five of the Lake County Code relating to permitting agricultural exempt and temporary cannabis processing structures. And in the ordinance, it states that for, for temporary drying structures such as shipping containers, that generators are allowed during the duration of the temporary permit for shipping containers. And I just wanted to know if with this condition, we'd be restricted from exercising, that's all.
I do appreciate that question. Considering how this permit has not yet been approved, we would not be handling that as a standalone item. All, all parts of the project that exist would need to be analyzed for environmental impacts. And so at this point, we have either the choice of this draft condition be added or we could, we could continue this item so that we could take in all aspects of the project going forward and so that the analysis is complete prior to approval of the project.
I, I believe I can speak for the applicant. No, we'll just take the condition. I just wanted to know if we would be able to, to do that, is all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I do still have public comment open, one more glance around chambers. And do we have any hands in the Zoom room? No hands in the Zoom room. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or action. Director, I do appreciate adding the additional condition of approval with the power. Has all of your concerns been at least addressed or touched at all? Commissioner Field?
Thank you. I did walk into this room with a number of concerns and they have been alleviated. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
There's no further comments from the commission?
No further comments.
I move that the planning commission find that the potential impacts associated with the project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-26 submitted by Van Ranch Omar Malvahn for the property located at 15095, 15187, 15263, 15365 and 15525 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, APN 002-021-04, 002-021-15, 16 and 17 and 23 will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 20-26 with the findings listed in the staff report dated March 28th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-23 applied for by Elk Van Ranch Omar Malvahn on property located at 15095, 15187, 15263, 15365 and 15525 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, APNs 002-021-04, 15, 16, 17 and 23 does meet the requirements of section 51.4 and article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated March 28th, 2023 and as amended today.
Second.
Motion and a second.
the project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-26 submitted by Van Ranch Omar Malvahn for the property located at 15095, 15187, 15263, 15365, and 15525 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, APN 002-021-04, 002-021-15, 16, and 17, and 23, will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 20-26 with the findings listed in the staff report dated March 28, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-23, applied for by Elk Van Ranch Omar Malvahn, on property located at 15095, 15187, 15263, 15365, and 15525 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, APNs 002-021-04, 15, 16, 17, and 23, does meet the requirements of section 51.4 and article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated March 28, 2023, and as amended today.
Second.
Motion and a second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Moving on, our next item is a public hearing. It is a continuation from March 14, 2024. It's consideration of major use permit UP 20-33 and mitigated negative declaration IS 20-39 for cultivation of 304,710 square feet of outdoor, of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy. Applicant is Meli Lu, Lu Farms, located at 8531 High Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, APN
Thank you. Work is ongoing with the staff and the applicant, and we do request a continuance to the second meeting in April at a time certain.
Okay. Do we have to identify a time right now?
It would be helpful so we don't have to send out notices.
Okay. Ruby, do we have a time slot identified for them? 9:05? If we could, we will do a 9:05 time certain for this continued item for the second week.
April 25.
April 25, 2024, at 9:05. Okay. We have a motion, and all in favor? All opposed? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for the continuance. I just knew I had to cough, and I didn't want to cough in the mic. Okay, so we have a motion to continue this meeting until April 25 at a time certain of 9:05. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Simple, okay. Turning it now over to Director Turner for our untimed items and possibly a department update.
We have no non-timed items for you, so moving on to department update. Our cannabis program manager has accepted a position in a different jurisdiction, so we do wish him the very best in his future endeavors. And we are using this as an opportunity to make a change in the department. Our, our existing planning team has grown in experience and is able to handle the cannabis permits load internally. So we are changing that position to be a staff services analyst at this time, which will fill that with a staff services analyst, which will help boost the capacity for our grants program. It has taken off in popularity, and other departments are looking for ways to team up with us, and so I don't want Shannon to go screaming off into the hills because we burnt her out. So, we're going to boost that staff resource area a little bit. We also have a position that we have posted for a flex position of assistant planner one, two, and associate. So we're bringing another planner onboard, and we're currently working with HR and admin to see if we can get an extra position for a senior planner. We have a number of projects that are big, like Maha, which, as I was trying to pay attention to our meeting, I saw went out for a request for review. So, and that has a ton of moving parts, which we already have one senior planner dedicated to it, but if we can bring in someone else with that level of experience and, and working through multiple moving parts of a complex project with an EIR, that'll really help staff resources. Additionally, we have other, other county projects that are coming down the line that aren't ready to be announced yet, but those will also demand experienced planning and additional resources. All of our current planning team is pretty busy right now. Additionally, as you all know, general plan and local area plan has been launched, and I delivered you some business cards that have our QR code that will take you straight to the lakecounty2050.org, which is a website that currently has the survey posted, both in interactive, you can take it right online, or if you want to see all the questions ahead of time, so we don't, you know, blindside you, you can check the PDF version and view the whole thing, both in English and in Spanish. And thank you, Ruby. Ruby has just posted, or just shared our flyer listing our first session of the local area plan meetings. So we are having nine, one for every area plan, and then a catch-up one at the shoreline communities in May. So the, most of these meetings will be taking place the middle of April. So you may notice at that April 25 meeting, I'll be using very short words and not very complicated sentences, because it's going to be quite an endeavor, but we're really excited about it. Just getting out into the community any way we can to start gathering all of this public input is going to be a very, very valuable experience for us.
What would you like us to do with these?
I would love you to pass them out freely, put them in the laundromats, you know, give them to your buddies, leave them wherever you're sitting at your table. What I'd love is for y'all to race to see who needs to request additional cards first, and we will be happy to furnish you with them, and keep the orders of cards coming so that we don't run out.
Okay, so I do have a question. So for the dates that are on the flyer that you just shared, is that something that, when we're passing these out in our districts or our areas to our constituents and our people, are we also trying to promote them to come and give public input on these dates?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, as I've discussed previously, our local area plans are going to be our more robust documents.
Right.
And we can't get that done without local area plan input. So please direct everybody to the local area plan meetings. It's a great way to focus on getting input during the middle of April. And then we do have ongoing meetings where we really need public input on the general plan in general also. So there is going to be no shortage of ways that people can tell us what they think, and where they want our county to go in the future.
And it's kind of a blonde question, but the, the one for Lakeport on the 22nd at 5:30, does that include, will the city of Lakeport have their own area plan, or is this the area plan in the grand scheme of the general plan? I'm just trying to figure it out.
Great question. The two jurisdictions that we have, the incorporated cities, both Clear Lake and Lakeport, handle their own area plans, their own general plans. And so there are a number of points during this process where we are regional, like our countywide evacuation plan and our climate vulnerability analysis, and I think our cap is also going to be regional, the climate adaptation plan. But as far as visioning for the future, we don't, we don't interfere with the cities.
Okay. Fair enough.
I'm sure you will still find plenty of areas in the unincorporated parts of Lakeport to encourage people to join in.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Director Turner, and thank you, staff. I will adjourn this meeting at 10:52.